Doesn't have anything on it. Just has a pretty picture. The one that's facing council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They love it. And our meeting.
Hey, Bill, I'm gonna promote you to panelist. You should get a flag on your computer.
Yeah. It's on my list. Right. I have a bunch of them, but I hope not. And we can have a computer. And it was fun.
Bill, you wanna do a mic check?
Are you gonna have to let me know?
How's that?
Loud and clear. Thanks.
Okay.
Code of Ethics or for which or for actions which have been perceived as unprofessional during advisory board meetings. One of the purposes of the Code of Conduct and the Code of Ethics is to provide a process by which city officials and the public may identify and resolve conduct and ethical issues. And the term "may" indicates that council has the option to choose this process, but it is not required to do so. In fact, the current Board of Ethics is working on revisions to the Code of Conduct, and we'll hear about those on April 4th, that would call for counselors to review fellow counselors' behavior when a possible code violation may have occurred. It's important for the public to recognize that we do not have the right or the option to go into executive session. These kind of conversations have to be have to take place in the public domain. So that is in part why we are here today. What I'd like to do is, in the course of today, I'd like to first talk about the review of staff concerns and the possible violation of a Code of Ethics or possibly a Code of Conduct as well. Then, after we have that discussion, I'd like to talk about the option for addressing behavior should council as a whole believe something needs to take place. So that is the kind of the way I'd like to lay out this meeting. I also have Bill Tuttle here. We have Bill here who's calling in while on vacation, so I appreciate that, Bill. And he, I believe, also has the Code of Conduct in front of him, as do I, and the Code of Ethics as well.
Can I make a point of order right off the bat?
A point of order? Sure.
The agenda item states that this is a discussion regarding council's role and responsibilities when one or more members become aware of a potential violation. That means this agenda item is a general discussion on policy and procedure process. If council wishes to discuss a specific potential violation, then the agenda should reflect that specific item so our community is aware and notified with the required due notice periods of what will be discussed, and all counselors are aware and can properly prepare to discuss any such topic. So I would like to have this meeting stay within the agenda item as was posted. And if a counselor wishes to discuss something else, then they can bring that forward during as a future new business item during a study session.
Thank you. First of all, I will call on Bill in a moment, but and Bill, as we I was we were advised, because there could possibly be a council action to file a complaint against a fellow counselor, we were advised to be as nonspecific, not naming any specific names as possible. Bill, can you refer to can you weigh in on Counselor Bosman's point of order, please?
Sure. I agree that to the extent that if any ethics complaint were to be filed, we have maintained a steadfast position that the details of that complaint, if it gets filed, who files it, are generally confidential. I also think that under a case known as the Town of Marble case, that the notice of this particular meeting is broad enough to identify a topic that would allow a range of considerations as to how council might consider addressing any particular perceived ethics violation and your potential courses of action. So I could it be worded differently? Yeah. Is it worded broad enough to cover a range of conversation? Yes. If I think you start straying beyond that, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, interim city attorney. So thank you for your point of order. We've received our advice from our council.
What is the advice?
You just heard him.
I asked to be if this is going to be discussion on a specific violation, then I think that should have been notified, and I am not prepared to discuss any specific violation because the agenda item states that this meeting is about council's role and responsibilities when one or more members of a potential violation. So if this is about a specific violation, that should have been notified.
I believe you just heard our interim city attorney's advice on this. If it was not clear to you, perhaps the interim city attorney could state it again. And specifically, Bill, could you provide your recommendation whether to proceed with this meeting or not? Because it wasn't clear to Counselor Bosman's. Thank you.
Obviously, whether to proceed or not is up to council. Can you proceed legally? I believe that you can. I believe that the notice was broad enough to allow a conversation. I don't know the specifics of the conversation you're going to have because you haven't had it yet. And if in illuminating your discussion, you go into specific examples as to circumstances in which council might feel that they would have to take some steps regarding potential ethics violations to help illuminate your discussion, that seems logical and appropriate to me. So I don't think you're in any way compelled not to have the conversation you're about to have. But again, I don't know the specifics of all of it because you haven't had it yet. So can you proceed? I think the answer is yes, you can proceed if you wish to.
Does council wish to proceed? I'll take a.
I will not participate in a specific attack, I'll call it, on something that you have determined to discuss if it's not on the agenda.
You may attend or leave at your pleasure, Counselor Bosman's. This is a meeting to discuss staff's concern about a possible violation of the code. That was discussed at the previous, and it I'm not gonna keep arguing when we have legal counsel providing us direction and support to continue. You have the option. You have the option to leave or to participate. Please make up your mind because I will not have you disorder in a disorder manner in this setting behaving disorderly.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I don't believe, Counselor Bosman, you were at the study session.
I listened to it.
I don't believe you were present at the study session, nor were you on Zoom as a participant when we had the conversation about setting up this meeting. So I just want to make that clear.
I attended. I didn't I didn't attend. I listened to that study session. And this agenda item does not specify what you really are trying to discuss, and it's not an example. It is a specific topic that you wish to discuss. It's been not been notified. So I
You may leave.
Violating the rules.
No, that is your opinion. We have received opinion from our interim interim city attorney. You may participate or leave, but we are not going to continue this discussion. If I have to, I will have mics turned off and turned on with permission. I'm not going through this again. Thank you. You may participate or leave. It is your choice. We are moving on.
As soon as the topic becomes very specific, I will not participate, and I will leave this.
Just like with any agenda item, we might give examples of things that happen, anything. You do the same thing when we have budget discussions. Point of order, thank you.
My point of order is that right now we have had conversation by Counselor Bosman's. We've had information from our city interim city attorney, and we're moving forward. And I believe that there's council support to move forward in this meeting.
Thank you. We will move forward, and I will start with a statement here, another item. So the question I that we raised at the last study session was about two items, actually, about a a staff member who believes a counselor may have violated the Code of Conduct, or Code of Ethics, excuse me, the Code of Ethics. No, this is actually in the Code of Ethics. I've gone through it. So there's other things that could be in the Code of Conduct, but in the Code of Ethics, which is Section 2205 mandatory standards of ethical conduct. It states that city officials shall not appear before the city council or any board or commission on which or over which the city official presides or has supervisory responsibilities, except in the city officials' representation of the city. And Bill Tuttle, I'm gonna call on you with a question in a minute, but I also want to say that city officials is defined as the mayor, other city council members, city attorney, municipal judge, the city manager. And it also, I think that's, let me find one more thing. It also states that this also means an officer, board, or commissioner member, a candidate for such position, and former officers, boards, and commission members for six months after the termination of service. So, Bill, my question for you is, as you read this Code of Ethics, because that's where it fits within this, if a city counselor chooses to go to another advisory board meeting and attend to listen, is that acceptable?
Yes.
And then the second, yes, thank you. Second question is if a city counselor goes to to another advisory board over which that city counselor is not the liaison and chooses to speak in as part of public comment, is that acceptable?
Assuming that that was not a elected official who was either a board member or a liaison appointed by city council to appear in front of the border commission or act as the liaison for the border commission, I believe that that would be inappropriate under Section 2-205, Subpart 7, as you've read from.
So that is the question of how to hold council accountable. Is if a city counselor chooses to go to another advisory board meeting or other something over which another advisory board meeting, is there a potential violation? And if I heard you correctly, it sounds like in your view that that would be the case.
That I believe that would be the proper way to interpret the code. Yes. There certainly those boards and commission meetings are with limited exception. For example, the Ethics Commission itself, they don't hold, they're not all public meetings. Sometimes they have executive sessions. And so assuming it's part of the public meeting, a council member is welcome to attend, to observe, to listen. And they can certainly share their observations outside of the border commission. But at the border commission meeting itself, it would be inappropriate for that elected official to speak up.
So council, any thoughts on what the interim city attorney had to say on this?
I appreciate what the interim city attorney had to say. I also wonder for the record if there should be a review of what staff communicated in the email to council.
I am concerned about specificity.
I I just, excuse me, just for one moment, I'm just wondering, there are certain conditions under which information is closed. That is if all parties concerned or the majority of the parties concerned wish to do so, I believe. But that would be something Bill might be able to speak to Mr. Tuttle.
A council member Baxter, I'm not certain exactly what you're referring to. There are certain communications with elected officials that can be determined to be so private that they are intended not to be made public. The definitions in the case law on that are less than it less than sharp in their clarity. There have been a couple of cases in which courts have determined that people who communicated with their elected officials clearly didn't intend for that information to become public. They may have communicated about private medical issues, family histories with upcoming potential legislation. And the courts have said they they obviously didn't intend for their their family's medical history to become a matter of public concern. However, because they weren't made public, you don't know exactly what was said. And so it's it's left for some of us lawyers to decide. In general, communications with elected officials are deemed to be public records. There are limited exceptions, and they're not well defined.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Tuttle. This is all relative, you know, we haven't had many instances in in addressing issues such as this. And so I do appreciate the understanding of whether or not that communication that was shared with city council via email is public or is that confidential information regarding this specific example that we may be referencing?
If you're asking me, I haven't, I don't know that I've seen the email in question. I don't know if the employee provided, assuming it was an employee, as opposed to a border commission member.
Actually, sir, you have, the email is marked, however, confidential.
Okay, then someone has probably got it, but it's it's a all I can tell you is the irony of the law here is all I can tell you is the the irony of the law here is those limited cases in which the courts have said it was clearly intended not to be made public. Were only reviewed by a court in camera. Which means that the public didn't get to see exactly what was communicated, which makes it hard for us lawyers to say, okay. This was so private, it was intended to be private, and this wasn't quite private enough that it it needs to be kept private. So we only see the ones that get released and not the ones that didn't.
So, Mr. Tuttel, if all, if the parties to the communication agreed to make it public, would that work or not?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you want to proceed with something, Counselor Baxter, in that vein?
Well, I don't have the email in front of me. I you may, or I'm pretty sure Jose can call that email up.
It's, I have it.
The only question I guess I would ask Bill just specifically is that I do believe, or maybe I misheard, that complaints or concerns on a possible violation of ethics are supposed to be confidential as according to the ordinance. And so I would want to make sure that that's considered in regards to before going through the specificity, because I think we do have that process of where they should have the opportunity to see it without it being sent out and being discussed and the specificity of it. So that would be my one question for you, Bill, is I do believe the ordinance says that any I'm going to use the word allegation. I don't know what's actually the right word in the ordinance, but that it should remain confidential until the Ethics Board rules. Am I correct?
Only once it's gone. Only once it's gone to the Ethics Board.
Correct.
So just Counselor Buell, I think wants to say something.
I just was asking, would this be something better, like, okay, we, there's a potential ethics code violation? And maybe just like next steps us as a council would like if there's an ethics code violation by a counselor, what should the next steps be? Should it be a joint filing? Should it, instead of having to go through the email and like all, it's just, I don't know if that's necessary? Like, just like, okay, what are the next steps? Is it a joint filing? Is it like, what is it?
So what I would like to follow up on Counselor Buell's suggestion, if I may. We have, we are aware of a counselor. We are aware of a staff member being concerned about a possible code of ethics and it pertains to this this item that I read in a very general way. You have given your opinion as the interim city attorney and our council that one counselor attending and one elected official, a city counselor attending an advisory board member to which that person is not the liaison would probably constitute a violation of the code of ethics as laid out in our code. We have, in my mind, several options that we can pursue. We have, we have the option to file a complaint to the code of, to the Board of Ethics.
Madam Chair, I'm going to leave this meeting. This is very clearly not a general discussion on councils, as the agenda item states. It is very clearly on a very specific alleged violation. The agenda item did not specify it. And as such, I think our community has not been made aware with the due notice period. I was not made aware that this would be another personal attack because obviously this is about me.
Excuse me, Counselor. Point of information, point of information. You must stop with a point of information. You must stop.
Continue without me present.
This is not an attack. This is a coming together of a council. You may leave now. You are a point of order and you are out of order.
Out of order. I think you are violating the rules of public.
Counselor Buell just asked us to speak about what process we would take.
This whole meeting is being about a specific.
You just mentioned that it's a process. You were being a victim. Please stop.
All right. Counselor Buell. As I. And leaving while out of order. Thank you. All right. So the code of conduct, as I said, allows for us to, that we may proceed with a process. Or we may also choose if we feel sufficient violation has occurred to take other actions as well. And these, so I'm going to read this from the from the code. Excuse me, one minute while I find my notes.
I actually have it in front of me if you're.
Oh, if you have those options, that would be great.
And these are only the options that come through the Board of Ethics. They're not the options that council is limited to. But it's based upon the seriousness, duration and nature of the violation. One is to issue a written reprimand. Two is to order for remedial or educational training on the subject of the violation to avoid or prevent future violations payable by the city, but subject to reimbursement by the city official through reduction or withholding of compensation. Three, issue a public reprimand. Four, take action to suspend or remove the city official from any elected or appointed position or policy liaison role. Or issue a public censure to include a letter of apology and or a written resolution of city council of apology to be sent to affected person. And it's not one or the other. It's just a list of possibilities.
Thank you. And for the record, that is section two dash two oh nine penalties for violation of the code of conduct and code of ethics. Yes. So so the question I would like to raise of council is there and I think it's a discussion, you can have a variety of options. Council could choose to take action on any of these items. Council could also choose as either individuals or as council as a whole, if there is consensus to take a more formal action by filing a complaint to the Board of Ethics. So I'd like to open it up for thoughts on if this alleged. It's not even, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't think that's the right word. I'll pull that back. Thank you.
This is one of the strangest meetings I've ever attended in my total entire life. So, but I will say that that given the information that we received by email, I did listen to the incident and the situation. And and I would believe that there's definite support for council moving forward with any or all, including a filing with the Board of Ethics on this matter.
So because the the penalties that are listed, it says after the code of or the code of conduct and code after, sorry, I've lost it. After consideration of the Board of Ethics findings. So this has to go to the Board of Ethics first. We can't just be like, and I choose to.
No, actually, council has the choice of of their own actions that they wish to take. These are the ones that the Board of Ethics might recommend. But that doesn't mean that we can't use that list or nor doesn't mean that we might have something else that we would like to do, as long as it was legal and within bounds.
So here's my, my like main point is that I want the next two years of me being on city council to be productive and effective and efficient and not have meetings like this happen again. And so I'm trying to think of the best way forward for for this situation and any potential future situations, right? Like, like, how can we learn, grow, get better? I feel, I'm like, yeah, this is a crazy meeting. I just feel like yeah, our core values of professionalism, integrity, teamwork, like all the things we value are being jeopardized and I don't like that. And so I just want to, like, how do we go forward and fix it? And so I would be in support of a code of, a Board of Ethics or Code of Ethics complaint, conduct complaint, whatever it is. And then, you know, I look at the like educational training as a potential source of maybe helping a counselor that is not following the code of conduct and code of ethics. And then you know, if there's, I I value our staff immensely and I value their comfort and their desire to work with city council in a productive way. I just sat through a retreat with the C E C and the banter and the how fun it was, like, you know, like, I just, and how productive it was. Like, that's what I want our boards and commissions and our staff to feel. And if they're not feeling that, I feel like action four removing him from or removing them person from any boards and commissions would be helpful too. But I'm in favor of going to the code of ethics to see what they suggest. But that's my biggest thing is like, I want, you know, our core values to be instilled, us to go forward in a productive way. That's what I want.
I I hear you. I I I would like to also respond. I appreciate that, Counselor Buell. I think it's vitally important. There's two issues here. I want to remind ourselves. One is that, you know, that we were recently made aware, but we are also aware of another staff member who feels or multiple members who feel that the conduct of a city counselor was unprofessional at times during advisory board meetings. And so we have to deal with, I think, those two staff concerns. I'd also like to say that to me and this is not a pleasant thing to do. Let's acknowledge it. This is, but I I feel we're here because we have a responsibility to hold ourselves accountable, just as we expect our appointees to hold the staff accountable. And so I think that this is, in my mind, is serious. I listened to the the tape. And I think it's a serious enough concern that I would support either going forward as a council with a a a complaint or and or taking action, particularly as it relates to the advisory boards, if council should choose to do that.
I recognize it is a difficult subject to have to bring up publicly for all of us and staff. I do think that given the nature of this potential issue and or issues and just process itself generally, when we have these issues, we do want to run effective, effective and efficient meetings for our community. It's in the best interest of our community. If any one of us steps out of bounds, there needs to be avenues for correcting that behavior. And I support in this case as well, given, given what has potentially taken place that I that I would like to pursue moving forward with with an ethics complaint as well and continuing discussion with council on how we how we address these issues.
So you know, from the last meeting we had, that I really feel without consequences to inappropriate behavior, it enables the behavior and the behavior continues. And I think this example is perfect example of that happening. We had the discussion several weeks ago about possible violations of code of conduct with no consequences and another code of ethics this time occurs. So I firmly believe that it it sets a precedent to allow it to continue and that therefore other people either need to behave in the same way, which is not good in order to get their point across, or they feel like they can because there's no consequence. So I completely support a Board of Ethics filing and I would support removal from liaisons of and for the rest of the term of that counselor's term, not just from the boards they're currently on, but from all boards and commissions, either internal or external.
Thank you. I believe we have consensus. I don't believe we've, I've heard from four. We have a super majority of support.
We have the, we have total agreement. There is four members here.
We have total agreement going forward with a complaint of the Board of, to the Board of Ethics by council as a whole, which is not something I think anyone takes lightly. There is a suggestion and and possible support and a question, I guess, is is there support also to take action as proposed under the item? Because this has involved boards and commissions to take action to suspend or remove the city official from any elected or appointed position or possible liaison role. What you believe, what you said, Counselor Baxter, was removal from as a as liaison to any of the boards and commissions. Is that correct?
Both interior, internal and external.
Internal and external. Is there other counselors? Do you have a thought on that?
Point of process thought, Mayor.
Yeah.
Is it possible, you know, we're looking at a date of March twenty eighth at this point. Wondering if it's possible to request and would it be potentially expedited opinion from the Board of Ethics? And in, in, you know, if if possible, I believe, I I think I saw that they were meeting tomorrow. I don't know if, you know, I, anyway, I I don't know if this is an item that could be expedited. That's my first question. And the reason why I ask that is because there, I guess, what I'm wondering is if the Board of Ethics will what it is that we will be having them review will because you've mentioned two potential instances, Mayor, and I am, I think that the second instance that you're referring to from staff is one that might help me as one counselor determine what appropriate next steps would be.
I also want to mention that one of the things that both the new recommendations by the Board of Ethics mentioned and also in here, it has to do with patterns of behavior. And so there's a very clear pattern of behavior that may want to also be used to support for the conversation. And so to your point, Melissa, the process. How does a complaint get filed? Who writes it? How does it get, you know, how does that work?
I think that we're in uncharted territory here. I don't think we are. And I don't know if that's something that as mayor falls in hands or if there are, or it might be the the ultimate, if if no one else is interested in in being the lead writer on this complaint, then I absolutely, as mayor, would fulfill that role.
So just is it something that we've done in the past when we've had things where councils as a whole was going to do something, but it wasn't logical for all of them to work on it, was we had a working group or a committee or whatever you wanted to do of two counselors who worked on things. So I don't know how council feels about that, if that would be a good way to start the process or what.
Sorry, is that a legal way to go about it, Mr. Tuttel? Or I don't know.
You have more than two of you working on it at the same time without it being an open meeting. I do think it would be better if this is the direction council wants to go for council to draft it rather than the city attorney's office, because we're put in a very awkward situation, even though we work for the city council as a whole. As a matter of professional conduct, I'm concerned about our office taking a position for for or against discipline on a particular council member. In the same way that classically, we have not represented the Ethics Committee with regard to specific ethics complaints involving any elected officials and hire outside council to do it. But it can't be the same outside council who's advising the Ethics Committee either. So I'd prefer, that's a long answer too. I'd prefer to see two members accountable, one member of council draft something or two members of council to work on it, but not three and not our office.
No, I understand. I lost my next, there was a minute of follow up I had. Oh, so tomorrow's meeting at one thirty, I'm sure the agenda is already out and so this cannot be added.
It will be too, it will be too late. They have to put out twenty four hours notice.
And yeah, and that's fine. I think that we probably want a little bit of time anyways to draft whatever we're going to draft to move forward. My, I would support two counselors working on this. I would support, I while I'm like leaning towards that as like a good, like a it makes sense to me for staff support, it makes sense to me, but I would, I would, I would lean more on the Board of Ethics and then their recommendations before I say that that's what I want to do.
Okay.
So it also wouldn't end up on the meeting tomorrow's agenda anyway, because once it's filed and then the and then the person that it's filed against receives it, upon their receipt, they have five days for a reply. And then the board at that point then makes an appointment to talk about it. So it wasn't going to happen tomorrow anyway, no matter what.
But on the, on the, on, Councilor Youssef, on your comment about expedited, if, if the complaint were filed relatively quickly and then the five days were allowed, then it's possible that the Board of Ethics could meet in, you know, special meetings and proceed. It does, it's hard to know exactly what kind of timing it may take, but if they, it could certainly be requested because of this, the seriousness of this potential issue that they meet with all, make all effort to meet in as timely a manner as possible. Does anyone want to serve on such a working group?
I hate to say this, but I have the most experience of anyone on this council. And I, and I, so if that's, if that's of any value, I'm offering it. But if anybody else thinks it would be better or more appropriate for someone else to do it, I'm, that's fine too, I just.
I completely support that and your experience, I appreciate it, I honestly don't feel I have it, I recognize I'm mayor approach, but, you know, I think that works.
Bill, I have a question of how something was handled in the past, and I would like your opinion about this. In the past, we had a difficult situation about writing a letter pertaining to the finance director's case to be presented before the judge, and we had a, I worked on it with some support. And then the four people who agreed to sign the letter were then sent the letter to have any comment in it, or any revisions as, in a draft format as a working document. Is that an op, is that a way to proceed with this, two people working it and then a support? Because of the nature of this, where, you know, it needing to remain confidential and it needing to go to the Ethics Board, is that a way we could?
In my experience, that is a way that these types of things can be handled. I personally take the position that circulating a letter doesn't constitute a meeting. People can sign it or not sign it as they see fit, or make suggestions. It's a, legitimately a matter for debate, but I've seen these things handled that way in the past. I mean, not just this, it may be a letter of support for legislation, it could be, you know, a letter to your congressman. There's a variety of stuff that, that tends to be done in that manner, in which somebody says, yeah, let's have somebody draft a letter in support of or in opposition to this particular bill or funding or approach. And they'll authorize someone to work on it, and then they'll eventually sign it. And they typically don't have a second meeting to do that. I am a little, I'm also going to ask you to think about, I heard a second suggestion here, which was to, one option that might be available to deal with any situation involving a potential code of ethics or violation involving elected officials is committee assignments. I would probably see, rather see that done at an open meeting where you've actually noticed up what assignments are being reallocated. I suspect that you make those appointments at your open meetings, I don't know if you do it by resolution or motion, because it hasn't happened while I've been there, but I, I think removing someone ought to be done in the same manner that you appoint someone.
Thank you for that advice, I appreciate it. What I would like to say is I too am happy, or not happy, that's the wrong word. I am willing to also work on a working group, and I have the ability this week to dedicate some time to this, because I think it is a serious matter and will require thoughtful preparation and presentation. Is there support for Councilor Baxter and myself to work together to provide a draft for review?
I support that, I support that as well.
I support that.
All right, then I think what we have clear is that we have honored the spirit of not being specific. Oh, I do support that, absolutely. I, I'd like to say we've honored the spirit of maintaining confidentiality while also trying to address holding each other accountable for our behavior and especially a possible violation of the code of ethics.
Mayor, if I may, I have one more question for Mr. Tithill. Mr. Tithill, this concerns the confidential email. What's the situation with that as far as that being evidence in a Board of Ethics filing, given that that's a confidential process?
I, my understanding is it would probably be common to include that as an exhibit, if that's what's triggering the suggestion that there has been an ethics violation. We have and are currently taking the position with regard to certain other open records requests that those materials supplied to the Ethics Committee are intended to be confidential and remain confidential until the committee has concluded its process and made a final recommendation, that anything short of that, it's intended to be confidential and stays that way, but after they're done with it, it probably becomes public. Does that answer your question?
Well, that answers that part of the question, but it doesn't answer whether or not, it doesn't violate any legal rules or anything to use that in the ethics complaint? And then, once they're finished, it becomes public?
I don't think it, it violates the rules, I will, before you send anything to the Ethics Committee, I will go back and reread that email, and if I have a different opinion, I'll let you know.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
And then, not having been involved in an ethics complaint myself in the past, I'm curious about the process. If, if someone has an ethics complaint against them, then they too are also under the rules of confidentiality, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that, Councilor Youssef. All right, is there anything else to be said? Then I thank council for your service, for your willingness, for your willingness to participate in this meeting, and for the direction council as a whole has provided, thank you.
Are you adjourning the meeting, Mayor?
Yes, I call this meeting to adjournment, thank you, it's 2:48 PM.
Thank you.